Good morning and welcome to the May 12th special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. Clerk, we have the roll call.
Council members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Mr. City Manager.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council. This is what we're calling Budget Study Session Number Two. You actually have had three or four budget study sessions this fiscal year, but we thought with the start of the calendar year and focusing on the upcoming fiscal year '08 or '09, '10, we'd start afresh. So you've actually had two study sessions focusing on the upcoming fiscal year. This is the second in what we anticipate will be a series of five or six study sessions during May to put together a plan for the upcoming fiscal year. This morning, we're going to start out with a high-level general overview of the financial picture and some general strategies and concepts that we have been following and would propose to continue to follow in balancing the budget for the upcoming year. And then the latter part of the morning, you will hear from several departments on their plans for making cost reductions to ensure that we can keep the budget balanced. I'm going to defer to our expert tag team here, Bob McFall and Bob Elliott, the Bobs, as we call them, who will take you through the first part of the study session. With that, I'll go to Bob.
And which one?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jim, Madam Pro Tem and members of council. We're going to be doing a bit of the follow the bouncing ball as Bob and I were trying to come to a conclusion how we would describe the intricacies of the budget process. The best we could come up with is it is somewhat of a spider web. It goes many directions at one time and lots of interrelationships. And so we're going to do our best to make sure that we reveal and go through all those relationships and their complexity. The primary purpose of today is to lay out the city's overall strategy and the numbers associated with that strategy, and then to begin the series of presentations by departments where they're going to do a very high-level overview of what their core mission is, what it is that they do, how their budget is dispersed and has been affected in this past year, and then what strategies they're putting into place and proposing in order to help us achieve the overall budget balancing strategy of the city. The first half of that was Bob and I want to go through just some high-level numbers, the current status of where we see the proposed deficit and the reasons behind that, and also to review the strategies that we've used. In this first slide, what we're really doing is picking up from the study session, the first budget study session that we had where we indicated and came to a conclusion that from a resource perspective, we believe finances estimate that we'll have 161 million, approximately $161 million in resources available. That's about a $9 million reduction from what we would have anticipated having at this time. So we are carrying forward that same number that we presented to council at the previous study session, the $161 million. And in the last many weeks, we have been going through the budget process, going through the departmental reviews, reviewing the budget, and continuing to look at estimated resources and the preliminary expenditures. And as a result of that, now we pick up from that 160, 109, and we make a number of adjustments to get us to the starting point of this current discussion with council. From the 161, 109, from a revenue perspective, that number is continuing to hold. We are continuing to use that number. Now, the finance has recent sales tax information that they're going to be adding to this and will continue to review the resources, our revenues coming in, but at this point in time, we're continuing to hold to the number of 161. On the expenditures, again, this is the same number that was presented to council at the previous study session, that the preliminary expenditures, if all things being equal, no changes made, would have been $168,710,000. From that, we have, as a result, continued to go through the budget process. There are adjustments that are made to that. The first is in capital outlay. We are going to be recommending that we expend $114,000 in capital outlay. That becomes an additional potential expense. To put that in context, a few years ago, our annual capital outlay was approximately $1 million a year. For the last several years, we have reduced that down to approximately $500,000 a year. We are reducing that from 500 to 114,000. The departmental unfunded requests, these are for items that simply have to be done. The majority of this falls, these as additional expenses, fall into two categories. The first is funds, $120,000 of funds that provide for brush clearance on city-owned property. This is simply something we have to do. We require property owners to clear their brush. We need to do the same on ours. And this is an amount that has been in the budget previously. It was actually removed last year. It's an expense we need to have. The other part is, the other expense adjustment in the unfunded request is Cedar Mini Park opening up. That has an annual cost of approximately $60,000 to maintain and operate that facility. So that provides for the unfunded request. The increase in paramedic transfer. As you know, our calls for service and paramedics continues to go up. The program, the paramedic program now requires additional funding from the general fund in order to provide for all the expenses. Simply, it costs more to operate it than the revenue that comes in, revenue through subscription fees, from insurance reimbursements and direct billings. In order to continue to provide for the level of service that we're currently providing and providing in the paramedic program, we need to include an additional $1.3 million. There'll be more discussion of that item later on. There is a mitigating proposal that the fire chief has made that will substantially reduce that amount, but going into it, that is a preliminary expenditure. The next is the current estimated increase in our insurance and benefits costs of $500,000. We're putting that in there as a plug number. That is the high end of what it would be, but we want, we don't, we want to go into this conservatively. We believe that we will actually end up with increased insurance costs substantially less than this, but for right now, we're using the $500,000. In approaching this, several months ago, when we started the process, we really sat down and we developed an approach of how is it that we are going to undergo this task of addressing the potential shortfall, the anticipated shortfall in the budget? And there's really four categories to the approach that is helpful to share, so that there's a clear understanding of the approach that we use, because we did not, we did not view this as a one-time exercise, but there are, there are some long-term needs for us to look at things simply different. The first thing that we did, and this is more of a reminder, is that we carried forward all of the council adjustments that were made on March 3rd. This was actually an $8.5 million adjustment that council made mid-year. Seven million, actually about 7.1 million of that were actual reductions in expenses. The expense adjustments that were made were primarily in the terms of personnel. We eliminated at that point in time 23 vacant positions. Departments also reduced their operating expenses by about $700,000, and there were a number of other adjustments that were made on March 1st to reduce our costs mid-year by $7 million. We are carrying forward, carrying forward all of the hard adjustments that were made, all the position eliminations, the M&amp;O reductions, all of those are being carried forward as a first step into the process for this balancing the budget for 2009, '10. The second, we know that we're not into this for just this year. The decisions that we make now have to be prudent decisions that will carry forward for future cost containment. So we didn't look at just making decisions that would help us just this one year, but that also that we would benefit from a number of years out. And in fact, some of these things are, would be best labeled as work in progress. These are not all complete. Some of them are. One of the very first things that we did is had a discussion about, we simply have to focus on our core mission. Over a period of time, perhaps we have taken on activities that really distract us from our core mission. Glendale Water and Power, when we talked about the consolidation of fleet management, I think Glenn is one who probably said it most succinctly when he said, "We need to give up doing fleet management because that is not a core mission of Glendale Water and Power." It is a core mission of Public Works. We do electricity, we do water, that's what we need to do. We need to get out of the fleet management business. And that's exactly what the whole focus on core mission is all about. Every department has done that as they've gone through the budget process. Secondly, we looked at consolidation of services. The fleet management is the most significant one, and in a minute, actually, I want to talk a little bit more about that, because that is a, that is a completed, in fact, I'll go ahead and spend some time on it right now. That is a completed process, the fleet management. We used to have four garages with four sets of management. We now have one centralized fleet management operation with one, with one management structure. Within that, we are estimating that we're going to save for this first year of operation about $1 million in costs, and that is built into the budget. And again, actually, on a later slide, I'll go over that in more detail. Besides fleet management, we are also looking at other operations to go through consolidation process, and we'll probably have at least three operations of significance that will be consolidated in this, in this current fiscal year. And undoubtedly, we will continue looking at operations even after council adopts a balanced budget this year. This will be work that will continue. The next is we looked at personnel practices. There's just simply a whole variety of areas, and this is a very broad topic, in personnel practices. Obvious ones are, when a position becomes vacant, do we need to rehire that position at all? Is that a position that should just be eliminated now that it has become vacant? Secondly, if it is a, if it is a position that we need, does it need to be rehired at the level that that position was at, or can it be more appropriately hired at another less costly level? A number, a number of personnel practices like that. The next, the performance audits of operations. We have a very robust internal audit department that in fact, in the past, in addition to doing financial audits, has done performance auditing. Primarily, they are distracted by the immediacy to do financial auditing. This next year, though, we plan on having them systematically go through our departments to do performance auditing, to see where there are further opportunities for us to consolidate services, become more effective in the way that we provide services, change our service delivery, delivery model. And to do it independently and objectively with the internal audit unit. The next are green investments. We have actually just completed doing a very, a significant and comprehensive assessment of all of the utilities usage in municipal buildings. This was performed by Glendale Water and Power. They have now put together a plan, and we will be effectuating that plan and the changes that we can make so that we use our energy more effectively. There will be, of course, an initial capital investment. We look at this as the long-term planning for future cost containment. Management information and performance measures. As we reviewed and discussed with the department heads, what would help them manage their budgets the best, what they said is more timely information on what our revenues are and what our expenditures are. Bob and Bob's department have been working very energetically to provide them the information so they can simply make more timely, more timely and better informed management decisions. And next, the performance measures. As we have been implementing in print form, our performance measures in the last couple of years, we are taking the next step of the next round of performance, performance measures in coordination with our internal audit department, the finance department. And then lastly, not by significance, but only on the list, risk management. We do have a risk management unit in the department, and we have tasked them with looking at areas of expense. For example, if there is a liability or a claim or workforce compensation issue, to look at it not only from the standpoint of how we should management in the short term, but actually go retrospectively back into what the issues were that led up to whatever the incident was, whatever happened, and to see what we can do to change our practices so that in the future, from a cost containment perspective, we can simply perhaps change our operating practices to lower our future risk. So those are items that we just feel were prudent to look for future cost containment. The next, the cost reduction strategies, and this is, of course, primarily where our immediate focus is at. And this list is primary, is somewhat in an order of priority as we went through these, because our, our objective was to try to reduce expenses while maintaining service levels. Obviously, in the end, some service levels are going to be affected, but we did not want that to be our first line of approach. So the first thing that we looked at, and some of this becomes redundant when we look back at the long, at the long-term, long-term strategies, is the consolidations. The consolidations of services and that can be centralized in some manner, and as a result, reduce costs, improve effectiveness. Next is personnel. There's a number of personnel actions that we are using right now as part of the cost reduction strategies, primarily the elimination of positions. And today, we'll be rolling, you will see in the next, next numbers of weeks, rolling out measures that would in fact continue to reduce the number of positions. We have, by and large, at this point, there's actually been a total of 67 positions eliminated for 2008, '09, and those have been primarily vacant positions. On a going-forward basis, these would tend to be more positions that are filled. And continuing with what City Manager Starbird has indicated, our purpose, our plan is to try to move those positions into other vacant positions as much as possible so that we don't fall into what would be a counterintuitive model of laying people off and placing additional unemployed individuals outside of the workforce. So a number of personnel actions. A reduction in our overhead costs. Wherever we can look at costs, whether it be the cost of providing for finance or in other areas, whatever our overhead costs were, costs of maintaining the fleet without affecting service levels, that's what we reviewed. Work effectiveness measures, as you can imagine, continue to look at how we, how we do our work and can we do it more effectively. Changing our service delivery model. The paramedic, paramedic dispatch is probably the most significant example of a, of a strategy that we've looked at to change the service delivery model. And again, the fire department will go over that in some detail, but achieve a half a million dollars or more in cost savings. Across-the-board reductions. It is safe to say, we just, well, some things we just said you will reduce by this amount. Travel, training, hourly employees, we just literally, across the board, said those are all being reduced equally uniformly in an amount of some substance. Hiring freeze, we've continued the hiring freeze. We will continue the hiring freeze into this next year. It will be necessary on a cash flow basis for us to continue the hiring freeze. Not that we'll be going over the capital improvement program today, that will be in a subsequent budget study, but the capital improvement program has become an important component of budgeting, of balancing the general fund budget. And we have gone through and reprioritized based on current service leads and also applying some of the long-term strategies that were noted before. And then lastly, the programmatic service level reductions. And this, you can call, this is the 5% service level reductions that we've directed all departments to submit requests in, and of which council is going to begin receiving the presentations on today. These are very difficult from the standpoint that they do directly affect the services that we provide to the community. That is the core, that's the core strategy. That is where the primary cost reductions are going to come from. The last item that we, that we looked at were revenues. In all honesty, there simply is not any capacity within generation of new revenues to meaningfully add to the budget balancing procedure. It is about cost reductions, it's not about additional revenues. However, there are, there are some areas that we need to be prudent about. First thing is, we want to obviously ensure that we continue to receive revenues that we are already, have been receiving, such as the UUT. We are tracking legislation and other potential efforts that could affect the revenue that we have, and we do have a serious matter that is at hand that could affect about $4 million of our, of our property taxes. Then council, I think the city manager has already made council aware that the governor has proposed imposing what is allowed under Prop 1A if in fact, in May 19th, propositions of 1A through 1E fail. The effect of invoking what is allowed under Prop A, Prop A being the legislation that was passed in 2004 that prohibits the legislature from reducing the share of property tax that we receive without going through a special process. The governor has already put cities on notice that he does intend to suspend a, the property tax revenue protections that are contained in property, that are contained in Proposition 1A. To the city of Glendale, what that would mean is a further reduction of about $3.9 million worth of revenue. There are, there is a procedure, there's a five-point procedure that the state legislature would have to go through, and that they would be borrowing this money. They can do it for up to three years. They have to pay us interest on that, that amount, and pay us, pay the cities back. The governor has to declare that there is a severe fiscal hardship, and then suspend Proposition 1A. And the legislature actually has to pass a budget, a process that would show how they plan on repaying back, back these borrowed funds. And they can't do this any more than once in a, or twice in any 10-year period of time. It seems likely that this is going to happen. It seems likely. The feedback on Props 1A through 1E don't look promising that they would, they would pass. So this appears likely that we'll need to address it. The city manager undoubtedly will share some comments on the strategy. We have not built into the budget an additional $3.9 million reduction.
Let me comment quickly on this. The level takeaway at 8% of the total amount of ad valorem property tax revenues is about 2.5% of our total general fund. So as you, as you contemplate the reductions that are before you, imagine if we had to do an additional 2.5% on top of another $4 million. Given the protections in Prop 1A, I think the governor will still have some hurdles to get over in order to implement this. Requires a 2/3 affirmative vote in each of the houses to implement the set aside of Proposition 1A. And then there has to be, on top of that, there has to be legislation passed that embeds in law the repayment of the money that's taken away within three years with interest. One can only imagine in Sacramento the difficulty of getting 2/3 of each house to agree on anything, let alone this takeaway. But it's not a coincidence that the governor has moved up his May revise announcement and report to just before May 15th, which is the election date. It was previously scheduled for May 28th, which is the traditional date. He has moved that up before the election, I suspect, to roll out these rather draconian impacts on cities to try and boost what is some pretty dismal numbers on the possible passage of especially Proposition 1A and 1B. So with that, I anticipate a recommendation to you, if this is implemented, that rather than to try to cut back further for what, what should be a one-time takeaway, that we consider this as a loan, because from a technical standpoint, it does become a loan. I'm not sure what interest rate is paid. I think it's probably tied to LEEF.
Yeah, it's no more than 80%.
I think it's probably tied to LEEF. But with that, we could actually record this as a loan. It would reduce our reserves, but if indeed the law is passed and the 2/3 vote of each house approves suspending Prop 1A, then it could be treated as a loan on our books and a takeout of our general fund reserves, which are more than adequate to handle a $4 million loan to the state. But more on that. We'll hear more on this from the governor and the Department of Finance this week and next week, but for now, this looks all but certain that he'll likely have to resort to this, because it's unlikely that Prop 1A and 1B are going to pass.
So with those as kind of a philosophy behind how we approach the budget, let's pick back up again with, with the estimates. This slide now creates into context the overall application of these strategies. Some of them is actually still to be determined in how we would see balancing the budget. So starting with the preliminary expenditures of $170 million, $171 million showing a, that therefore estimated potential shortfall of $9.7 million. The first thing that we are recommending is that we assume the balance of the 5% reductions. This is a bit of the bouncing ball again. Starting out in 2008, '09, at the very beginning of the budget of balancing the '08, '09 budget process, departments were actually reduced, asked to reduce their budgets by approximately 5%. And ultimately, council accepted, accepted some, actually the majority of that, and we ultimately had a balanced budget. Mid-year, we asked departments to submit another 5% reduction plan, and this is the one that the council and departments have been working through over the last several months. On March 3rd, we, when we came into council with the budget adjustment strategies, a portion of that 5% strategy was presented to council. About $4.3 million of that strategy was presented to council, which council accepted. That is what, that is what eliminated the first 23, or the second 23 positions. So we are recommending that we continue, that we in fact invoke the balance of the 5% reductions. This is what the departments will be presenting over the next, the next two weeks. These are reductions that are not easy reductions. There are public policy issues involved in these. They are, they are quite programmatic. So that's the first item that we would recommend. Secondly, is cost allocation. Bob Elliott has noted in the last meeting that the finance department has taken on a very comprehensive and very objective look across the city to see what general fund resources go into, to supporting and providing services to non-general fund departments and funds. Because the, technically, the general fund should be held harmless of costs that are spent in non-general fund departments. So in going through, and in fact, for a number of years, the general fund has charged other departments for the services that we have provided. We have not, though, for a number of years, gone through and, and updated those, those numbers and rebalanced them. As a result of that, the, without significantly impacting other operations, we believe that we can allocate an additional $2 million, legitimately an additional $2 million of general fund costs to other departments. Now, in some cases, such as in GWP, this actually resulted in a reduction, and I want to note that, it actually resulted in a reduction in what the general fund costs them. And in all fairness, the cost allocation plan needs to be what it is, and the numbers fall where they are. And in this case, we found that we can actually reduce what GWP has charged. In most cases, it was an increase, but overall, it provides an additional $2 million in revenue. That is the only revenue source that we see, significant revenue source that we see as part of the budget balancing. The next, the GFFA, as we had already noted, and council has taken an action on, the Glendale Firefighters Association and management have eliminated their, their salary increases to the general fund. That reflects a $900,000 cost reduction. Under the fleet, fleet management, the fleet management consolidation that has been effectuated will, we actually believe conservatively will result in a million dollar reduction. And this is really in three areas. One, we have simply consolidated management staff. And while some of this is going to take a time to realize the savings, because we are not laying people off on this, although we do have a key vacant position that we're able to capitalize, the consolidation of the staff is one of the areas where we see the immediate reduction. Two other areas are significant in this. We're now looking at the fleet in its totality, and as a result of that, just upon our initial review of the total fleet, we are able to reduce 62 pieces of equipment. And we're not talking about lawnmowers and edgers. We're actually talking about significant pieces of equipment that are removed out of the fleet. That means we do not have to depreciate them any longer, we don't have to set aside money for them, and we don't have to maintain those. So that's 62 pieces of equipment that, that will be reduced out of the fleet. And lastly, we evaluated how vehicles are used, used by employees. And there are many, many applications where it is necessary and appropriate for an employee to take a vehicle home because of the, the nature of the work that they do. In other cases, we found that while it might have been helpful for them to take it home, it wasn't necessary. There's 105 vehicles that were taken home before, which actually is a relatively small amount of the fleet, but we've reduced that by an additional 57 vehicles. So 57. So 57 vehicles are being reduced from those that are taken home. The combined cost of that is a savings of about $1 million a year for this first year. Once again, work in progress. We would hope to see many other benefits as a result of the fleet consolidation, one of them being how we actually purchase and acquire vehicles. So more to come on the fleet management consolidation. The next is organizational consolidation. And once again, more work that's going to be going on this next year, but from what we see at this current state, which is primarily our graphics unit and the employee health services, about a $400,000 reduction in costs. And we are only putting up numbers that we feel confident we can achieve. In all cases, we hope the numbers are actually more than this, but we only rely on what we feel confident we can achieve. The next is the new service delivery model for the paramedic program. And without stealing Harold's thunder on this, but this is actually civilianizing a portion of how paramedic service will be provided in cases that simply don't require a paramedic with all the credentials, but something less than that, and that would result in a $600,000 to $700,000 reduction. With all of those reductions, and they are significant, in particular the 5% reductions, we remain almost $1.3 million short from balancing the budget. We are continuing to work on it, of course. We have another $1.3 million to go to balance to the 163, 109 that we need to get to. And of course, we need to receive council feedback on what you're going to be seeing and continue to adjust the budget as we receive direction. We have a few other areas that we're continuing to look at. We continue to have employee negotiations, and this is not only for existing contracts, but it's also looking at what new contracts would have been coming up effective July 1st. So we continue with the employee negotiations, continue having very good cooperation from the employee units. We are continuing the hiring freeze. It's just going to be essential as a part of the strategy. The cost savings that you see, I think that we've shown they are best characterized as annualized. They are not going to immediately start happening on July 1st. They will take some time to get things into place, but on an annualized basis, that's what we would have. On a cash flow basis, that means we need cash. We have to continue with the hiring freeze so we can continue to provide for the cost of services during this transition time. We may have to look at additional 1% in department reductions. Actually, departments have already submitted an additional 2.5% reduction plan. That would take the second round of reductions up to 7.5%. We're actually looking at at least 1% of those that we may have to recommend. And then there's a number of other items that go on beyond this. If in fact, we change the work schedule that we've discussed with council before, if we go on furloughs, there's a number of options beyond that that tend to be more one-time cost savings, but they could get us through a difficult period. That provides the context for what you'll see from the departments. But of course, we want to provide an opportunity, if there's any observations or additional questions, before moving into the department presentations.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments on what's been presented so far? Turn, Mr. Drayman.
Well, I don't have any questions right now, but I do have, I just want to point out that I will have, excuse me, will have a couple of questions, but I'm sure the rest of us will. But I do want to know, on page three of that presentation, under the section of overview of fiscal year 2009-2010, continued number three, cost cut, cost reduction strategies, consolidation slash centralization of functions and services, fleet management, et cetera. I want to know what else? I keep hearing about fleet management and graphics. And we keep attaching an et cetera to that, but I'm never hearing about the et cetera, only the fleet management and graphics. So what else are we looking at, if anything? I don't need an answer right now, but when we get to it. And then the other areas, we keep talking about, coming back to fleet management consolidation. I really want to know, and I think that the public wants to know, now this issue's been We talk about how we've cut, but you know, I'd like a clearer picture of where these vehicles are going, the take-home vehicles as an example. That's maybe not fleet management consolidation, but in terms of take-home vehicles, where are these vehicles going? From what departments are they being used? Are they considered perks for employment? And what's to prevent, for example, if it's an emergency person or with emergency responsibilities who needs a vehicle at home so they can get back here quickly? What is the cost effectiveness of, I don't know, a flashing light that plugs into the cigarette lighter that slaps onto the dashboard as opposed to having a vehicle to take home? I just, you know, I think we need to know about that and where these remaining vehicles are and what they're used to. Maybe there are completely valid reasons, but I think we need to know. I don't know, I would like to hear about it. Those are just a couple of areas that I, at some point, would like to hear about.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one comment and one question. The comment is that as we go forward, public participation is going to be very important in this process. And I'm wondering if on the regular GTV scroll where these meetings are noticed, if we can also put what departments are coming in on particular days, so that if someone's interested in the park ranger program, they know what day the park rangers are coming in. So that's a comment. I have a question, a little, not exactly on what you were talking about, but yesterday I got a report from human resources showing the breakdown of, comparison of our salaries versus other cities. And I was glad to see that we were sort of in the average, but there were a few areas where we were above the average or way above the average. So my question, and maybe this isn't the right time, is are we going to be able to address that, or are those positions that were pre-negotiated and we have to wait until contracts expire to look into those?
On the first matter, we'll do that. That's a great idea, make sure that the public knows which departments. On the salaries, it is the city's policy and practice, and has been for a number of years, that on our labor market comparison, that by and large, that we establish our salaries at an average of the comparisons. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, we are at the average. There are cases where either, one, just because that is a best effort that takes place and at a point in time, it is at the average, but perhaps with the other comparison cities, the salaries haven't moved up and ours ends up being a little bit higher above the average, or that there are circumstances that are unique. We actually don't compare just by title. We actually do look at function. So within the function, there are times where we say that the average simply isn't germane. We have to look at other comparison factors. We don't, by practice, go back and reduce that. That is then, that is an adopted salary amount. However, that position typically wouldn't get the same level of market adjustment or other adjustments until, in fact, if it is intended that it should be at the average, then over time, it will come back to being at average. If the position goes vacant, then we can completely readdress the position and change the salary if that seemed appropriate.
And if I can add, if we take one of the departments like police, where you may have a three or four-year contract, at the end of the contract, we'll go out in the marketplace and see where we stand. Let's say we end up above the average. That'll be one of the factors we'll take into meet and confer for the next contract period, saying, well, we need to keep up with inflation, but we don't need to do as much to keep you up on a competitive basis. So that'll be reflected in the amount that we would attempt to get agreement on in that next contract period. Now, we haven't found ourselves very often with the police or fire groups finding ourselves above the market, but that can happen. And in that case, it's taken consideration as we negotiate the next contract period. So there wouldn't be as much, we wouldn't want to negotiate as much of an adjustment over the three years, knowing that we're already above the average.
Are salaries something that as the departments come forward, they'll address? Or is that something that's sort of, we just wait until those?
Well, that's something we should discuss separate from the department budgets. It's something we should discuss as the council and staff lines out our strategies for the current and upcoming meet and confer. For example, you have a management and GCEA, and we're currently in negotiations with police. We should have those conversations at that time that you give us direction as to what to implement at the negotiating table.
Thank you.
Mr. Najarian.
Thanks. I just have one question, I guess to Bob. Bob, what is our core mission?
On a citywide basis?
One of the strategies is to focus on the core mission. And I think we could spend a year or more discussing on what the core mission is. Each of us perhaps has a different concept of what is core, what is it that we owe above everything else to the residents, and what services or programs are not core and susceptible to be chopped, to be cut in times of shrinking revenues. But that being said, with regard to the particularities of our residents and of the council, is there a, cities have gone through this before, clearly, what have they seen, what have they identified as core components, the core mission that they feel? I mean, it's as much a philosophical question as anything else, but it's philosophy turned reality when we're assigning line items on the budget to them.
There is actually significant discussion on that, on that very item. And you're right, maybe what would be to Jim or myself or to department head could have variations of a theme. We fortunately, though, have some very good current information of what the public views as the core mission, and that is the two years of strategic planning that we went through that was very community-based continues to be quite relevant. And departments use that information as they were going through and assessing their priorities. Because in that, in our most recent effort with the community, that was one of the questions that we asked, and we asked it in a very practical kind of way, as what do you see as the most essential services that's provided?
Do you, if I can, let me add, in the budget presentations, you'll also get the department's perception of what they believe their core mission is. You may agree or disagree with that. But let's take one that would probably be a little easier than most in the area of police, basic patrol and response to crime incidents. When you get to the heart of it, if we didn't, that would be one of the last things you'd probably cut in a police department. There are a lot of other programs there, but if you ask police in particular, they would tell you their core mission is probably those two, those two functions, response to crime in particular and their patrol units. You may have a different view depending on the programs they bring forward to be reduced, but you're going to hear from each department what they think their core mission is based on the feedback from the community, the views they've developed over the years of doing the budgets with city councils and their own professional views on that.
Well, a couple of things. You referred to the process, the community input process that was done two years ago. And I think at that point, and I just threw mine out. I had it and I said, well, look at this document. It says that the public is very pleased with the direction Glendale is going. They're very pleased with our level of services. Perhaps all we've heard in the past year, maybe from just one or two or a handful, is that how poorly they feel Glendale is going. I think we need to go back to that and see whether those, and see, refer to that and see what are the core expectations. With regard to our core, we picked the police department, but when we talked about patrol and crime investigation, isn't, I mean, let's take that a level higher. Isn't our core mission to keep the community safe? Whether it's through, I mean, there may be other models for the police department to do that, whether it's through intervention, whether it's through early education. It may well be that patrol is the best way to do that. But I think if we're really going to, when we're identifying, focusing on the core missions, I think we're really talking about very, you know, a broad understanding of what we want. We want to be safe. We want to be, we want to have access to our hospitals. We want to be able to conduct our business. We want to have uninterrupted flow of electricity and clean water. And as I said, this is a large philosophical discussion that we can get into. So to say get to the core mission, it's really sort of begging the question as to what is it that we want to get into. And each one of us perhaps has a different understanding. We come from different backgrounds and different understandings of even particular neighborhoods. The core mission for one neighborhood might be different than another. So that's a huge challenge that you've laid on us when you talk about our long-term planning for cost containment. Are libraries core? To some, no, libraries are not core. Others are essential. Are ballfields core? Some no, some yes. So it's a huge, huge challenge. I hate to just gloss over it and say, oh, focus on the core mission, that's great. What is the core mission? And when I think about what is the core mission, it's not an easy decision to make. It's not an easy thought process that I go through. And I don't think it's easy for any one of us when we do that. I just want the public to know that. This is a huge, huge task that's laid on us every single year, especially this year, when we have to go and trim. In fat years, oh, it's easy, you know, everything, throw it all in. But in the lean years, it's a daunting challenge.
You've identified, going back to police, something that they wrested with, the difference between preventing crime and dealing with a crime that's active. If you're down to your last dollar, what do you do? Do you go after the criminal, if you want to say, that has actually just committed a crime, or protecting a victim, or do you invest it into prevention? And of course, they see a balance in both. But as resources begin to diminish, that becomes the challenge of how much do you place in the preventative side, which of course is where you want to put it. But if you have victims at hand that need attention, then you have to place resources to assist those. That is a very difficult balancing strategy to come up with when there's limited resources. And it is, it's a challenge for council to identify the overall form and purpose of what we're for, and then all of the various different core missions and core applications to get there.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, just to orchestrate off of that, and how this balancing becomes even more critical, and council member Najarian, you were talking about, to some people, parks are not necessarily core or critical or have the same, reach the same priority or libraries as, say, police. Those are also pretty general categories. We say police, but part of police that we saw last time around was also police equestrian program, police boxing program. And we say, we hear people that come to the podium and they say, well, these are essential parts of prevention because they get kids off the street or involved or engaged in a program. But at the same time, we allow a cut to libraries, which also do the same thing, but not through police department. For example, you know, we have thousands of visitors to the library, thousands and thousands and thousands. But we would make cuts to library hours and library services when far more of our youth are engaged in library or park programs than in a single equestrian program offered through the police department. But we categorize it as saying, well, that's police. And that, and police as a general category takes a higher precedent in many people's minds, or in our minds, very often, than, say, libraries as a general category. I think core mission, though, is a good way to look at this. I think what the city manager was saying is true. Certainly, when we see representatives of the departments coming up here, they pretty well tell us what their core mission is, what they believe their core mission to be. I have to tell you, as someone who was not here when this strategic plan was done, but someone who went to some of the meetings, I'm not so convinced that those were, well, I'm not so convinced that visiting the results of that is necessarily going to be all that helpful, but in any case, I'll save that opinion for another time.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. I understand this is introductory and so forth, but there are a few items that I think need to have a little... need to have a little more information. For instance, on the first page, an increase in paramedic transfers expenditures of a million three, shortfall of a million three. I know we're going to hear more detail from the chief, but are there some general solutions that we are taking, or general solutions that other cities have taken?
The primary solution that the chief is proposing is changing, literally, the qualifications of the individual, triaging the qualifications of the individual to response. If somebody just simply needs simple transporter, has a very low-level situation, they simply don't need the fullest, most qualified paramedic staff to respond. So what he is, he, and actually, the GFVA, they have worked together in concert to come up with a different service delivery model that actually eventually would reduce the number of sworn paramedics through attrition, but actually over a relatively quick period of time, so that those, it would be a different level qualification, and that, and they believe conservatively would have a cost savings of $600,000 to $700,000 while protecting a level of service. As opposed to just eliminating the paramedics, which me, reducing the number of paramedics, which means longer response calls or some other means.
Let me respond.
Elliot, Mr. Elliot.
Just to add, this is kind of a two-part issue. The million three is a transfer to the paramedic fund from the general fund as a way to support the paramedic fund. The savings that we're estimating, the $600,000 is resulting from the new BLS model. The paramedic fund is a special revenue fund and has been struggling for years and has dug a fairly deep hole. The transfer, there is currently a general fund transfer, this is an increase to that general fund transfer, or from the general fund to the paramedic fund, to kind of stop the losses, if you will. And we're anticipating that this new BLS will turn the tide, financially speaking, in the paramedic fund to get it back on a good financial footing.
Mr. Starmer.
More broadly, looking at the situation with the paramedic program, in most communities, what you find is a paramedic operation is part of the general fund operation, just part of the basic fire services provided. Communities that provide transport of patients have a means of attempting to recover part of their cost of paramedic services, but it does not ever cover the entire cost. When, we were in a unique situation, especially for a city our size, of having private transport paramedic services through AMR nine years ago, when we went to the city taking over that service, which we can point to the statistics and show that the response times drastically reduced throughout the city. And at the time, we were both running four paramedic units. We set that up as essentially an enterprise fund to track the business model that we had developed, to see whether or not we could make it self-sustaining. The reality is, you can't make it self-sustaining because, especially in a community like Glendale, you have too many patients who require the services, who don't have the ability to pay. And you can't recover the full cost through insurance programs. And you can't make up the difference because the people just won't pay. And yet, you're obligated to respond. You can't discern between the people who will pay and who won't pay when you get called to the fire station. So what, the conclusion we've come to is to continue to operate the paramedic program as an enterprise just continues to duck the issue that is part of your basic fire services, the paramedic services are not ever going to be self-sustaining. But there are ways to modify the approach, and the approach that the chief has taken, which is to look at, as sort of a triage approach to how you dispatch, can reduce your costs. In Glendale, because we split it out, we see this separate cost that in most communities is automatic part of the fire department operation and part of the burden the general fund carries. What we're suggesting here is, we need to finally take that step, fold this back into the general fund, take the steps that we need to, to reduce our costs as much as possible and to recover as much as we possibly can in revenues. But to think that the paramedic program is ever going to be self-supporting, frankly, we're just deluding ourselves. Because it hasn't been in the past, we can't see a scenario under which it ever will be in the future, especially with demand rising, the number of non-pays going up. We had to add a fifth unit four years ago, three years ago.
A couple of years ago.
A million dollars a year in a fifth unit in order to respond to the growing demand for EMS. So this 1.3 is really recognizing the general fund's continued burden to support that program, hopefully being able to offset those increasing costs through the triage approach to dispatch that Harold and his staff have been working on, which is not used by very many cities, by the way. There are only a couple of models out there that use that approach, but Harold believes it's very workable. And we'll tell you more details about that when he makes his presentation.
Models here in Southern California?
It's a model that's used by a handful of agencies in Southern California, but has been successful in reducing the amount of staff and costs and time that you need to send on those medical responses that don't really require a full response, a full EMS, emergency, critical medical services response.
Okay. Then on page two, in terms of consolidation of services, fleet management and some of the other operations you mentioned, I think, is an excellent response, and already we can see some cost savings. Now, before the end of the budget sessions, Tuesday, May 26, I'd like to see a little more information on an overall consolidation of services in terms of some of the departments, and strategically, what you may be thinking about, whether you've executed it or not, but at least have some feel for where we're headed in terms of these consolidation of services and bringing it to the next level, if you want to use that term.
And I'm comfortable that we'll be able to do that before the end of this fiscal year, bring you forward a report and a plan that will look at, in particular, community development and housing, and some options and alternatives that we see there.
Okay. Well, this fiscal year, I mean, I'd like to have just some broad overview before the end of the--
Well, that's what I mean. The current fiscal year we're in, before the end of June, we'll be able to bring you--
Well, no, but what I'm saying is, I'd like to have it before the end of this budget session. I don't mean totally fleshed out, but at least some strategic planning so that we can keep, and the public specifically can keep in mind what the city will be doing in the future to close some of these gaps.
Okay.
Okay. Then in terms of green investments, I'd like to see, and once again, we're going to get it when GWP does their presentation, but I'd like to see, or I'd like to hear today, what other ideas do you have in mind in terms of some of the utility and other? I mean, it can be more than utilities. It can be the type of vehicles that we buy, et cetera, et cetera.
We actually, we are in the process of preparing a report. We have an internal team, cross-departmental team, that involves, hopefully, all the disciplines that would need to be involved in this, and using the energy audits only as one example. But the vehicles is definitely, definitely one, and other things that have already been put into place. Of course, a lot of it hinges around actions that the GWP will be taking, that starts all the way from how we're acquiring energy and resources down to how the city is using it. So honestly, I'm not prepared right now with an exhaustive list, we will shortly, of what's coming out of this, goes down to our personal recycling efforts, to how we acquire, to looking at things at a carbon footprint basis as opposed to just a cost basis. For example, the way that we acquire vehicles, where right now, we acquire them based on per set of specifications, a lowest price for specifications. Now, we are trying to get to a point of being much more mature about that, as more sophisticated, where it is not only just a cost, it's a total carbon footprint that that vehicle leads. So we are trying to ratchet up, not trying, we are ratcheting up our efforts to be much more sophisticated. I apologize, I don't have a more exhaustive list of those efforts, but we plan on being a green, a green community as a city, and bringing back a number of policies, because some of them will have cost implications, but we have heard council's direction that you want to be a green community. Staff is excited about that. There's just nothing like doing the right thing, and that's one of the right things to do.
Yeah, for me, that would also include water usage and how we can go about cutting back on. Ms. Friedman, you had a question?
Not to get too far off topic, but with this green team, I'm assuming that it's made up of representatives from different departments?
Across departments, yes.
I would like staff to look into whether it would be more efficient to also have one person who has experience with environmental issues as opposed to every department trying to find their way. I know other cities sometimes hire sort of a green officer who coordinates all of those efforts and oversees them, somebody who's trained in environmental, you know, planning and has done this sort of thing in other cities. So we should look into that.
We'll do that.
Okay. Then on page four, the fleet management consolidation, I would also like to have some more details in terms of the categories of vehicles and personnel. We don't have to talk about, you know, job titles necessarily, but just an idea of what is out in, what vehicles are out on the roads here in Southern California. I'm happy that 57 were taken off, but let's see what else we can do. And then finally, on that same page, other potential strategies, I think we need to, and we've talked about it informally, but I think we need to talk to the department heads, talk to the associations, and see what we can do in terms of voluntary furloughs. There may be some individuals in city government that might be interested in taking a day off every two weeks, something. Let's see who out there is interested in doing that, their personal, if it doesn't affect their performance on the job, I think voluntary furloughs is something we need to, we need to explore. We might be surprised at people's interest in taking off a day or two a month. Any other comments, questions? So now we're prepared to go to the--
Next up--
Well, wait a minute, before we do, I have a, I have a, a little bit of oral communications. I have a card from Herbert Milano. Anyone else want to speak on this topic? Okay, Herbert Milano, followed by Hareem Kazazian.
Good morning, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. The recession is now two years old, and governments at all levels, federal, state, county, city, are under significant pressures to be able to put back government under some semblance of fiscal control. Back in 1978, when Proposition 13 was voted in by the voters of California, it was a control of the growth in government that was so incredibly essential. Now, I want to say that capping property taxes at 2% per year created a limitation as to what the voters expected with regard to the growth of government. But if I take a look at what has occurred in Glendale, since 2001, the growth in payroll has far exceeded the growth in the property tax increment. In 2001, the growth in property taxes was about $200,000. The growth in payroll was about almost $6 million. In 2002, 2003, property tax increases was about $300,000 to $400,000. The payroll increased by $8 million. In 2004, the property tax increase was exceeding between $1 and $2 million, and the payroll increased by $14 million. We have, except for possibly one year, we have never really kept up the type of control in growth of the payroll compared to the property tax, and I could add sales taxes to it as well, and other taxes, and payroll by far outstrips that. Now, what I want to show you here is that we also have increases in several other ways. And one of them is, that's a result of increases in personnel, increases in middle management, and increase in pension obligations. Here, for example, is the Glendale management growth. The bottom chart shows the growth in the upper management, in the city of Glendale, from 105 back in 1998 to 121 now. But if you take a look at the growth in middle management, from 147 to 227. And gentlemen, this is a fairly significant increase in what is happening to middle management and what is happening to the cost in Glendale. I would also like to bring up another chart, and that is the, basically, to answer the question, are we paying comparable rates with regard to pay? Well, you have to take a look at the whole compensation. You cannot simply take a look at the actual pay that appears eventually as a sum in the W3. Let's take a look at what Glendale employees pay with regard to their share of the compensation. If you take a look at the very bottom of that chart, it shows the employee's contribution. And the upper, the higher bars show Glendale's share of that as calpers presents to the city of Glendale a higher and higher proportion of the charges in order to sustain calpers. This is incredibly disproportionate, and this is not even compared to what the county does, where employees are paying 11% share on that amount. We pay up to a maximum of 1.5%. What I'm telling you is that you're not getting the full picture, and it is my hope that we have a little bit better transparency and perhaps a citizens' commission to truly look at all the compensation packages. Thank you very much.
You?
Hareem Kazazian.
Good morning, Mayor Quintero, members of council. I have three different issues I'm going to speak on quickly. We do have the paramedic program. There is a, where every homeowner can pay some, it's a minimum amount, will help the paramedics. Maybe we should encourage that a little bit more, you know, monthly. If we put a newspaper ad or something to encourage that, we can collect some money out of that system to help the paramedic program. That's already there, but we need to advertise that more. And maybe we can advertise during city council period or news press, we can collect some more money for that. The other thing is, our trash land, I know why many of the revenue has dropped at the Shaw Canyon. The Shaw Canyon, our fees are way out of line, are too high. In fact, it's known in the industry not to go to the Shaw Canyon dump, go to different dumps, don't use the Shaw Canyon dump because their rates are so high. I just went to Shaw Canyon dump, took one load of trash there, I paid $230 to dump it. That same load, I can go to Sun Valley and pay $75 for it. It's a big difference. So people go to Irwindale, they go Shaw Canyon, they don't go Shaw Canyon, they go to Valley to dump it because our rates have gone up so high that we're losing a revenue now. Maybe we should look in that, bring the revenue, the rates down so we can make more revenue out of that system. The other thing is, in our landfills, are we forgetting to do some more studies on that, to see how we can extend the life of our Shaw Canyon dump and meanwhile generate more income? We talked about that during the election time, and if you appoint a group of community members that wants to get involved without hiring a consultant, I guarantee you, there would be a lot of people who would like to get involved and help and generate a system that could help the city generate more revenue, income out of that Shaw Canyon dump. We have one of the best sites available to us. Let's utilize it correctly. Let's find a system that we could make more money and extend the life of that. Thank you much.
Thank you. Any comments on oral communications?
Mr. Drayman.
Yeah, I would just remind Mr. Milano that it's not just gentlemen up here anymore. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Elliot.
First up, we have the planning department, so Son will introduce his.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to use the same format and try to give you a brief presentation, and I'll be happy to answer your questions. I'm happy that after the last series of questions, to start our presentation about our mission statement, this is really the guideline or the guiding principle that we use to test ourselves, to challenge ourselves, and to see if we are going in the right direction. We wanted, in one sentence, to pretty much summarize what we are supposed to do, and that is to provide innovative leadership in planning, reflecting the community's vision while maintaining a transparent and predictable development review process with efficient and courteous customer service. These words are really deliberate, and I'd like to spend a couple of minutes to discuss a couple of aspects of it. One is to let you know that this, the premier large city that we are, it is no longer sufficient for the planning department to be a department that follows the basic planning practices across the country. The demand that the community puts on us really dictates that we be a leader in the field of planning, and you have accomplished that over the past few years. I must point out that San Fernando Road rezoning, downtown specific plan, the hillside ordinance, the design review process, and the idea of having urban design in the planning department are some of the things that your department does that other planning departments are copying. And then, to reflect the community's vision-- And then to reflect the community's vision is an ongoing challenge for us because we have a very diverse community, we have a large community, and for us to know that whether or not what we are doing is reflecting the community's vision is an ongoing challenge for us. And then transparency and predictability are also challenging because our processes are getting more complicated, and it's very important for us that we are able to explain what people should expect in our processes. And the core services, everybody thinks we do the zoning code. I must underline that our main product and our core service is to prepare and update and implement the general plan. That is where your policy is embedded. The zoning code will only implement that. And specific plans, effectively process development applications and historic districts, manage forebords and commissions, and maintain ongoing dialogue with the public. That last piece is an important part of our core responsibility that is constantly a challenge. We have four sections of responsibility. The first one is administration, that consists of myself, the zoning administrator, and all of the clerical staff. Administration is a big part of our work. We have many mandates to do notices properly, to use proper wording and do notices in time, meeting certain deadlines. In addition to that, there is a certain level of qualitative administration that you've asked us to implement, and the administration staff is very important and key to our operations. Current planning, which consists, this is basically case processing. That's about half of our staff. That's all of the counter, all of the phone calls, all of the cases that are applied for and are processed through various boards and commissions. That's done by current planning staff. Comprehensive planning, that's about eight people. Believe it or not, our city has about eight people and staff that produces all of your zoning code, the subdivision code, all of the general plan, the specific plans, everything that we do that typically is done in other cities by consultants for sometimes millions of dollars per year, and I'm not exaggerating. You, you have eight dedicated staff people who are doing all of that for you, and from time to time, we get current planning staff to step in and help with various aspects of it. And then you have the urban and design and historic preservation team. That's what we call the design studio. The design studio is a really fancy way to say that we are really implementing all of the demands for design, urban design and architecture and historic preservation that your city demands. That's basically a very small, or chart explaining the four different divisions that I actually explained. If you'd like, I can get into more detail about each one of them. We were asked to talk about what we accomplished last fiscal year. I wanted to point out a few of them. We completed and adopted the housing element, which was certified by the state. We were, as far as we know, we were one of the first few cities in the state that actually accomplished this. Again, this was done in-house by planning and economic development and housing, I'm sorry, community development and housing staff. We launched the North Glendale Community Plan outreach since January, since January, we've had 32 meetings, and 18 of those have been after hours. We adopted three historic districts. That is a large accomplishment for the small number of staff that we have. Each city usually does one, maximum two. We've managed to complete three. And we, as you know, we have adopted zoning code and downtown specific plan amendments and implemented parts of the downtown mobility study. We combined the planning commission and BZA into one board, and instead of one meeting per month, now we have two meetings per month in the evening. Last year, we also moved the DRB and planning commission meetings to the evenings. That's approximately six meetings, standing meetings per month, and over, over that one year, we have staffed about 150 board and commission meetings as well as 20 community and advisory group meetings. These are, this is where we maintain dialogue with the community, those community and advisory group meetings. And then we implemented the new design review board reports and functioning. As you know, you adopted the new direction of, for the design review board. That has been taken some time to implement. We're still learning, we're still getting better at it, and that requires a lot of staff reports and spending a lot of time with the applicants. And then we also instituted written reports with recommendations for both the design review boards and the zoning administrator hearings. Prior to that, we did not have written reports. Now we have detailed written reports which are posted online for the community to see before the hearings. Last year, we, these are the actions we took to reduce 5% for 168,000. We eliminated two hourly positions. We transferred the funding of one of our positions, a mobility planner position, from general fund to traffic and transportation funding sources which are not general fund. That position still is there, is working all the time, but it's not funded by general fund monies. And then we reduced our MNO, where we could cut, by $28,000, which may not sound like a lot to many, but to us, that's 20% of our MNO budget. This is the breakdown of our general fund, spend, expenditures for salaries and benefits. Last year, we were just a little bit over 3 million, 3.2 almost, and for next year, we are about $51,000 more, and that's, the increase will be mostly in insurance and step increases, nothing, no new programs. The MNO, I said we have reduced our MNO. Here, it looks like we have, we are increasing our MNO by $10,000. I must say that mid-year we came and you gave us about a little bit over $9,000 to do special outreach for North Glendale and La Crescenta community planning. That's reflected in that MNO, and that we're carrying that over, plus some increases in insurance. That, that's why you have an increase of $10,000, over $10,000 there, and that's our general fund totals. So overall, next year, we are expecting about $62,000 increases. Well, to balance the 2009 and 2010 budget, to reduce it by approximately $170,000, what we would have to do, we would need to eliminate field positions. At this point, there is really no other place. We have no consulting funds to cut, or we have no MNO funds to cut. We really have bodies to cut at this point. Future challenges and impacts, this is what we expect to confront in the upcoming year. North Glendale, La Crescenta, Crescenta planning trade-offs. As you know, we've been in a meeting with the community. We have been listening to the desires of the community, and we have found some areas of consensus, but also some areas where people don't seem to agree. The next series of dialogues will be focused on identifying the trade-offs where people do not agree, constituencies do not agree with each other, and where we can find points where they're willing to give up some things for certain other things that they could have consensus on. That's a challenge. And primarily, some of these challenges are focused on Foothill Boulevard zoning code updates. The Foothill Boulevard zoning, we have determined, is not appropriate, does not fully reflect the community's vision, so some of the differences of opinion we're getting are primarily between those who own property on Foothill and those who live next to Foothill. And in terms of what the zoning code should or should not allow on Foothill, we expect a certain amount of discussion with the community. Then a big challenge for us is community outreach. We, we're typically getting somewhere between 60 and 70 community members show up in our meetings. In any planning department, if you say that, they say that's a successful turnout. However, we know that we have a very diverse community, and the 60 and 70 people that we're, we're seeing repeatedly are not necessarily reflecting every constituency that we know who sometimes talk to us privately and who are not coming to these meetings. So one of our challenges is to find ways to have dialogues with those segments of the community who are not comfortable coming to traditional public workshops or advisory group meetings and find ways to reach them. And we have, we're working in several different venues. We're talking to churches and places of worship and community groups to see if we can have specific focused meetings and also business or organizations. Some business owners do not necessarily feel comfortable mixing with everybody else. So we're giving opportunities and providing ways to, that we can have additional dialogues. Design guidelines, we, we, our same staff who are working on the general plan and are, who are working on design review boards are also responsible for writing all of the new design guidelines that are so essential to our operations, and so that's one of our challenges, to complete those. And historic districts, as you know, three historic districts have been adopted. We need to implement them appropriately and properly, and then also we expect new historic districts to come in. So that's an interesting challenge. We're really looking forward to it. Another challenge is increased expectations with the same or fewer staff members and budget. We are now really focusing on the qualitative aspects of our work and how we provide our services. It's not, it's, it's no longer about providing the services, but it's about the quality and how we're responding to the community, and the more we respond to the community, we, we learn about their desires and where they're satisfied or dissatisfied. So the expectations are going up, and we're welcoming that. So our challenge is to use the same number of resources that we have to then increase the quality of the services that we provide to the community. So the expectations are going up, and we're really up to that challenge. We just, we wonder how we're going to do it, but we're up to it. The other piece is comply with SCAC's Sustainable Regional Community Strategy. This is SB 375. That's required by the state, and we're working closely with the Southern California Association of Governments. That's coming up with a strategic way to implement that in, in, in our region, and that mean, that will mean changing many of the way, the things that we do, changing our processes and maybe introducing new processes and introducing, introducing new regulations in our books. This really concludes my presentation. I kept it brief. If you'd like, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Mr. Starber.
Hassan, before we go to general questions and comments, can you give a little more explanation as to the implications of the $170,000 in reductions if they were implemented? Beyond, there would be two positions, the nature of the implications for services and programs?
Yes. What, what basically that means is that we would have to do the same or more level of service with fewer people. I have to say that last year, what we did, we, we, when we transferred the meetings to the evenings, we managed to not increase overtime by a whole lot, maybe about $30,000 of overtime for clerical staff, but we've managed to use management staff who are not subject to overtime to predominantly staff our night meetings. So they're expected to work longer hours and pay attention to the long meetings. So future cuts, some of that, some of the cuts will be in management staff and maybe non-management staff as well.
So the $170,000 would be one position or two positions?
It, it would be one plus maybe one or two other positions.
And you don't have any vacancies currently?
We have absolutely no vacancies.
Okay. And so, so the essence is you lose one plus a portion of a position, which if we implemented immediately would, would mean a layoff because you don't have any vacant positions, and your approach is everybody else has to try and work harder?
That's right, and we have implemented that so far.
Mr. Freeman.
Well, first, I want to thank you and your department for the forward-thinking actions you've taken in the last few years. I think you've done an excellent job. Sometimes I hear from the public that there, on occasion, seems to be a disconnect between the planning department, building and safety, code enforcement, and I think in the past there's been some discussion about moving to more of a case manager type approach where a project has one person who's sort of assigned to it, then follows it through all of the different departments of the city. And I'm wondering if you've looked at that in terms of, if that's something that you think might help efficiency, help streamline the process, maybe reduce redundancy? In other words, do you think at this point it's worth taking a bigger look at how we do planning, how we move new development projects through the city? Would that result in any better efficiency, any cost savings?
I, I must say that in the planning department, we have actually implemented case processing. Every, in our current planning, which is case processing, where we implement, we started implementing that under the previous director, that we, we started assigning a planner to every application that comes in, and we have now moved further than that. We, we assign a planner to every inquiry that comes in, and the follow-up inquiries with our new design review process, people meet with us sometimes 10 times before they actually submit an application. We have actually an assigned planner that is assigned to that inquiry until the case comes in, and then that planner gets assigned to that case and follows it through until the planning entitlements are over.
My question is, once it leaves...
That's right.
...and goes into the other departments, is, is there a conversation that, that can be had with building and safety, with code enforcement, that somehow would, do you think would make this process more efficient and maybe lead to some cost savings?
Potentially. I cannot speak for building and safety and their, and their discipline, but that's potentially something that we could do, that the baton could be passed on to another case processor in, once they're done with planning, and that there would be two individuals who could work together to make sure that the continuity continues. And the same would go, as it is with code enforcement, I think we have something like that because once a code enforcement officer is assigned to a case, when there is a code violation, that officer gets assigned, and that officer works with the case planner that worked on it in our two departments. With building and safety, that's potentially something that could be done. I know some other cities have done a similar process.
You know, you've heard, I'm sure, some of the same questions from the public, is whether sometimes planning approves something, everything is great, everyone's happy, and then somehow some of those approvals get lost along the way. Something else gets built, nobody seems to notice. So I'm just wondering whether it's something that we can address that concern while also making the whole process more efficient.
We can address that process, whether or not, and, and we can actually start, we're looking at expanding the planners, case planners role after the planning approvals as well to make sure that the continuity and the quality, and we, and that's part of the increased expectations that I talked about. We know that there are follow-ups that the community is expecting, and we have come up with a number of ways, and we're discussing them with various departments, and I'm sure we will be looking through the budget process at efficiencies as well.
Mr. McFaul.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, you hit on a couple of the core issues of, in fact, this very, this very subject. And the, the coordination, the coordination within the individual departments is, is good. Planning and the case management approach, and frankly, building and safety has a similar type of approach. It's getting those to meld together and then combining the, the code enforcement with that. Those are the three operations. The solution to it is one that is structured, but not just structure, it is also practices. So we are, we will shortly, in the next few weeks, be coming, coming in with some very, I think, some significant recommendations on, on how to take the next steps to dealing with it. You have hit on the, the core issue.
Mr. Nijar.
First, I'd like to say, I'd like to address this to Mr. Hagani and every other department head who may come up here. Please don't take my comments personally. We're up here scrutinizing every element of your budget, so no offense, as they say. But here's, earlier, Mr. Hagani, we were looking at some of the revenue side of our other budgets, other accounts, other departments, and one thing that we were told is that there is a severe decrease in the amount of permitting fees that we're receiving, indicating there's a severe decrease in the amount of plans that are being submitted and people wishing to, to do buildings. Aren't you realizing that same decrease in the amount of cases that are you, that you're also getting?
Yes, I, we are. And let me explain, and, and we're using this as an opportunity to train our staff. That is true. We have seen a significant decrease in the number of applications. However, at the same time, we have introduced two new processes to our staff that are pretty much not done anywhere else. One is written reports for the design review board, and now written reports for the zoning administrator hearings. The zoning administrator hearings, we're not original in that, other cities do that. So that, but that's a new practice, a new demand on the planners. That takes some training. The design review, report writing is very complex. It's, it's something that even architects don't do. I have to say that because it's, some architects just deal with graphs and visual aids, and we are now providing something akin to architectural journalism, you know, which are detailed staff analysis and critique of proposed projects that need to be published, put on the record, and put on the website. That has not been exactly easy. That has taken a lot of training. Planning schools and architecture schools do not train staff for that. We are producing a brand-new practice. So we're taking advantage of this downtime to make sure our staff are well-trained and good at doing this so that when the cases go up again, they'll be able to process them faster, because some of these staff reports take a long time to complete.
And we asked you to, to provide that input to the DRB administrators.
Right.
Here's another question. What impact has the, on your budget and your staff time, has the initiation of the...
What impact has the, on your budget and your staff time, has the initiation of the, initiation and ultimate approval of the three historic districts had? Is it a large, time-consuming matter for your staff? I know we have to do a survey upfront, and there's a consultant that usually comes in and there's funds paid out. So, is this a significant item in your department's budget?
It, it is, it is only significant, but it's not significant beyond our ability, our previous ability to absorb it. I think, talk, let's talk about that. The, the creation of historic districts, the process, the creation of the process for creation of a historic district was something that took large amounts of staff time and resources through many, many community meetings. That was maybe a two-to-three-year process of trials and errors. That was really significant. But, once the process was adopted, and once we went through the very first designated historic district, I think we now have a rhythm that we can absorb in our staff time and function as it is. If all of a sudden we get six applications for historic districts, that would be a significant demand.
Do you have any currently on the burner?
We, we're suspecting maybe three coming in.
Can you handle that with the, I mean, we're asking you to cut your budget, 170 down, and you're, you say with these reports, the DRB are already, your plate is full. Is that a problem? Will we see a request for an increase next year?
If we see such an increase, and along with that, we see an increase in the number of cases that will be, that applications coming in, we will probably see a problem. And, but I'm not going to start saying that until such, such an occurrence happens. At this point, we are able to absorb that.
How would you deal with that? As a department head, you've got your budget tweaked, you've cut the 5%. You're, you know, the cup is, the water's right up to the edge of the, the cup, and all of a sudden, you've got, you're met with enthusiastic neighborhoods who want to be classified historic. How do you set your priorities? Or do you, or do you throw that to council as to how you're going to balance your current caseload, your daily caseload, your future long-term planning, like the Foothill, and you're going to go to each, the Northern Glendale, you're going to go to each other area of the city, along with historic preservation, tweaking the mobility plan, et cetera? How do you set your priorities?
Well, we, what we do is typically what we do, we first look into ourselves, and we, I get the, the top management staff together, and we take a look at our work program, and we think of ways of restructuring the work program with this number of staff that we have, or asking some staff, for example, for the historic districts, what we did is that we asked current planning staff to volunteer their time to do historic surveys on weekends and on their time off. And they did.
Public didn't know that.
And, and, and they did. What people, we, we came together on Saturdays, and we trained our staff how to do historic surveys, and then they volunteered as a way of learning-
These are good things. I, I hate to interrupt you, but the larger picture, we don't hear that about our employees. We are criticized. You've heard the criticism about our money-grubbing employees and look at their great retirement system and all that. Well, this is something that's very good that I'm hearing, and I should know this, so I could fire back and say that our employees oftentimes, on their own weekends, are volunteering to make this a city, make this a better city. So, please be free, and all the other department heads. Let us know when your employees are doing those kind of good things. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, I'm glad you asked the question, because the main philosophy that we have about our organization is that it used to be that planning departments were divided up into specific functions, and each set of staff members were only trained to do those functions. One of the things that we've stepped away is that. We are now training all of our staff to do multiple functions. They're multidisciplinary staff. So, the same current planning staff can step into comprehensive planning, and we're now training our staff to do historic preservation. At least the basic introductory levels of each discipline are being, every staff member is being trained to do all of that. And yes, we do ask our staff to volunteer their time, and they do step in.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you very much, Hassan.
Thank you.
Next.
Yeah, but I-
Want us to do it?
Mr. Elliott?
Yeah. We are now going to go a little bit out of order and jump right into Park and Rec.
Good morning, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council.
Let me bounce for a second.
Okay. I apologize, we thought we wouldn't have enough time for today, and tomorrow we're all at a park summit meeting, so we're going to make sure that we get on.
Okay. The mission of the Parks Department overall is to provide a safe, well-maintained parks and public places. It's to preserve open space and historic resources, caring for people by providing quality human services and creating opportunities for renewal, growth, and enrichment. We do that with all of the lifelong learning classes that we have. The department is, basically has four divisions, the Park Administration, Park Administration Section, the Park Planning and Development Section, and I'll get into all of those, the Park Maintenance Section, and the Recreation and Community Services Section of the department. And here's the organizational chart. We do staff two commissions, the Art and Culture Commission and the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Commission. And as you see, it's broken down into various sections. The Cultural Affairs Section is a little different. It's not a division of its own. It, it does serve under me as the department head, so it's, it's not a full division. Parks Administration Division, we're responsible for the fiscal and personnel management, the clerical support services, the staff support for the two commissions, the grant administration. We prepare capital project grant applications, and we maintain a grant portfolio. And this is our grant portfolio at this time. As you can see, we've got over $9.7 million in grant money in our portfolio at this time. Some of them are frozen, the Maple Park, the Pacific, not, yeah, the Pacific Pool as well, and the Riverwalk, and the Propay Funds in, in the La Messe and Yay Barn. But overall, this is a very busy unit, brings in a lot of money for the city, much more than I think many other cities. We're really blessed by having a position that can bring this kind of money into the The Cultural Affairs Section is really responsible to take a leadership and generate high support, quality arts and cultural experiences for Glendale. Some of the things that they're responsible for, the open studio tour and gallery exhibition, and that's an annual tour where most artists that live in the city open their studios or their homes for people to come in and visit, take a look at their artwork and potentially buy it. The Man's Inhumanity to Man Exhibition, recently, they did the art exhibit that got, you know, several high-acclaimed, it was just, it got a lot of press. The Diamond Awards for the Achievement in the Arts, and this is for people who make a contribution to the arts in Glendale. We're in the middle of developing art policies, the Chalk Art Event, which we held at the Chess Park. We do have an Art in the Park event coming up in 2009, and in Arts Tune-Up. We have a number of workshops for artists, and that'll be coming up soon. The Park Planning and Development Division, they are responsible for coordinating community involvement, the design and development of new parks, assisting with the acquisition of, of land for development. They manage capital construction projects such as the ARC at this point. They all, also are involved in Natural Resource Management right now, which is the Trails and Open Space Programs, development of campgrounds, you know, creation of new trails, maintenance of new trails. Right now, the Park Ranger Program is also in that section. The Park Maintenance Division, again, we have over 276 acres of developed parks, 39 developed parks and recreational facilities, over 285,000 square feet of building, and they are responsible for maintaining all of that. In addition to that, we have a contract with Parkwood Maintenance Contract for 120 non-park sites, such as fire stations and libraries, medians, pump stations. So, it's a tremendous amount of, of green space that, that the division maintains. Oh, okay. It's not picking up. Okay. The Recreation and Community Services Division, again, this provides recreation programs for special events, youth and family services, youth and teen programs, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm, whoops. How do we go back? Just. Okay. Is that back on? Okay. I'm sorry. The special events programs, this includes Cruise Night, the Montrose Halloween Event, Winter Wonderland, Movies in the Park, the Holiday Tree Lighting, Music Pacific, the Penny Carnivals, Easter Extravaganza, Maple Park, Mariposa Event, and Santa in the Parks. The youth and teen programs, these involve the Parks Creating Futures, the after-school programs. That's an educational and fun drop-in school program for children 6 to 12. The Park and Play Mobile Recreation Program. This is a recreation program on wheels, where we take the van out to the various communities, close off the streets, and, and will provide recreation services for the kids there. Tot Time, which is a drop-in program for preschoolers, and we have seasonal day camps. These are all for youth and teen programs. The senior programs, these are older adult activities, include, they include holiday parties, they include special events, classes, and special excursions. Sports programs, we have drop-in basketball, drop-in volleyball, tennis lessons, soccer for the kids, aquatics programs, and sports leagues with this program. The lifelong learning classes, these are contract classes, and we provide a whole variety of, of classes for the community, including arts and crafts, music, and other programs that cultivate creativity. And of course, we have a volunteer program that help run some of our community centers. And I think, last told, we estimated this to be over $150,000 worth of volunteer hour time that's provided to the community through these volunteers. So, tremendous program there. Additionally, we have some special use facilities. We have three community centers, Pacific Maple Bar, Brand Studios. Separate from the Brand Art Gallery, this is Brand Studios, it's just below there, and we do some programming there, the Adult Recreation Center, Verdugo Skate Park, the Civic Auditorium, which has special programs, the Glendale Sports Complex, and we've got various ballparks, buildings, sports fields, and picnic facilities that we ran out. We do have, in addition to recreation, we have a human services element, component, which is fairly new. We've been developing it over the past five years, and that includes youth and family services. And this is designed to provide outreach and information and referral services and case management to the at-risk youth and their families. The program supports the family unit by providing guidance and decision-making in their lives. We serve about 50 cases, 50 kids a year, and make about 400 referrals for services to other, other various social service agencies for these kids. The senior services program, as you know, we have the Congregate and Home Delivered Meals, the Care Management, which is case management for seniors, and the other human service programs for seniors, which is health screenings, insurance counseling, legal assistance, tax assistance, those type of programs for seniors. The therapeutic recreation program, this is for, for mentally challenged adults. It's the Club Maple Program. It's really a jewel, one of the jewels of our program. We're really proud of it. It's a positive, positive environment for these adults. There's a Get Fit Program, there's monthly excursions. It's really tremendous value to the community. And Park Planning and Development, some of the accomplishments for that group is we renovated seven playgrounds. Those included upgrading, ADA upgrades, new playground equipment, new wood fiber, also the drainage issues that, that the playgrounds have. So, we did seven of those parks. We renovated Schulte Canyon Ball Field, all three ballfields, they're now completely new. We renovated four restaurants last year. That was New York Park, Loretta, Pellicone, and Carr. We renovated two community buildings, which was the Joe Bridges Clubhouse over Glen Oaks, and also the Dunsmore Community Room. And this included complete hazardous material abatement, structural work, just the whole, we went through the entire building. And part of the problem was that over the years, because of the deferred maintenance of these facilities, we're now seeing the, the result of deferred maintenance, because in prior years, there weren't, there wasn't enough money to, to maintain these. So, the structures, literally, they, they put Band-Aid on, on the problem, and when we went in, we really saw how bad they were from the deferred maintenance over the years. And also, we, we did renovate the Civic Auditorium, Park Instructure Fire Sprinkler Systems. Quickly, for the Park Maintenance Section, 2,240 work orders, they renovated two ballfields, and, and those ballfields in Montrose Park and Pellicone, they laser graded it and put new sod, new sprinkler heads, that sort of thing. We resurfaced three tennis courts and one basketball court. We renovated a doctor's house, and that renovation really encompassed rebuilding the pillars, the porches, landing, and the painting of the entire house, and worked with the Historic Society on that. And we have started the installation of waters, urinals in all the parks. We should be complete this year. And my understanding is they save about 14,000 gallons a year of water. So, all of our park facilities will be, will have the waters, urinals. We wanted to test some of them because we really have high use there in vandalism. We want to see how they held, held up, and so far, they've been holding up fairly well. So, we're going to install those at all the parks. And finally, just some of the other highlights, we were awarded the Distinguished Site Award for the two senior meal sites, and this was based on food quality, the variety of programs, and the atmosphere of the sites. And we were only, I think, two out of 13 sites that were awarded county-wide, out of the 88 cities. So, it was really, the Distinguished Site Award is prestigious. We celebrated 20th anniversary of Club Maple with some programming, distributed 2,500 social service resource guides, assisted 70 seniors in maintaining their independence, and for people who have seniors or, or parents who are, are elder, I think avoiding premature institutionalization really has a tremendous impact on these seniors' lives. So, we, we think that's a great achievement. And then we have the Quarterly Social Service Consortium that we, we initiated, and we, we coordinate the meetings. And this is, we bring a group of, of social service providers into the same room for a day. And some of the topics we, we discuss are youth violence, preventing youth violence in the schools, celebrating cultural diversity, and we've done reconnecting the family to the community, sensible solutions for struggling families. So, these are all, I think, 50 or 60 nonprofit organizations that get together and go through these topics, and, and make sure they coordinate and, and talk to each other, they communicate to each other. So, we've been doing this for about, I think, two, two and a half years, if I'm not mistaken. Here's our, the cuts that we've implemented. We eliminated five vacant positions in our budget, the Administrative Assistant Position in Admin, Park Services Manager. And the Park Services Manager, the, we had three Park Services Managers that oversee three sections. We consolidated, we eliminated one and consolidated the, the person that oversees the contracts for the, the other facilities, the, the medians, the other city facilities. So, that person is now working two jobs. They are doing the Park Services Manager for one section as well as contract maintenance. Eliminated an equipment operator, a pesticides applicator, and an office service specialist. In addition to that, we moved project staff members over to the CIP Fund, and then reduced the operating hours of five facilities, five of the community centers, Maple Park, Pacific Park, those facilities, with minimal impact to services at this point. As of March, we implemented six more where this is the, the actually recommended vacant positions to eliminate. Again, an office services supervisor, this is out of admin, an office services specialist too, which is out of the yards, which puts another load on, on their administration to get more work done administratively without this office service specialist. Another building repair, two park rangers, which have been vacant for over two years now, and a community services specialist, which was- now, and a Community Services Specialist, which was one of the positions that we needed for the ARC, the new ARC, but we're going to make do with the current staffing level at this point, once we open the new ARC. And then transfer all the remaining project staff salaries and benefits to CIP Fund. Overall, wanted to give you a sense of where our budget is. We have three funds, General Fund, Enterprise Fund, and Nutritional Meals Fund. And we are at a $15.4 million budget preliminary for 2009, 2010. But I wanted to spend a little time on the Enterprise Fund, if I could. The Enterprise Fund, we're really proud of the fact that we have a balance in the fund reserve of 1.9 million at this point. And this is collected through rentals, through our Leisure Guide classes. So this is our revenue at this point. And as you can see, we do have an income of $407,000 in '07, '08. In the '9, '10 figures, it drops a little bit, because I think we're going to see some cost allocation to the Enterprise Fund of $32,000. So that's where that figure comes in. These are conservative estimates. We always work with conservative estimates when we do the Enterprise Fund projections, revenue projections. So we should practically see more than this, but we want to make sure we stay conservative with this. And this doesn't include, it doesn't factor into filming revenue that we get. Usually, we will get filming revenue from the Skate Park and some of the other parks. For example, we had $8,000 that came in this year for Cedar Mini Park, where CSI, one of those crew came in and filmed at the Cedar Mini Park. So there will be some revenue from filming, we're just not sure how much, just depends on the film industry at this point. And one of the other things we will be doing this year is we have two vacancies. We have an Office Service Supervisor position, it's non-General Fund, of course, that we won't be filling at this point, and we'll underfill another Community Service Specialist with a 20-hour position. So that will save us $87,000 in '09, 2010 budget as well. So here's how that fund looks in the past five years. As you can see, we had a balance of $224,000 in '03, '04. We are up to $1.5 million in '07, '08. So we've really done well in this fund. And that's just a lot of marketing, it's reducing costs to the fund. So really proud of the fact that the staff really took it seriously and increased the balance of fund reserve. And this is what we can use for some capital projects in ballfields and things like that when we have a need. And this is our Nutritional Meals Fund. Again, these are funds that come in from the county. In '07, '08, we did have a fund reserve, a balance in the fund reserve, and that just gets pushed over to the next year if we need additional funds. That's where we would take it out of. Some of the future challenges, of course, the funding associated with maintenance and operation of the pool project, that's going to be a future challenge. We have a tree maintenance program that has no money in it, and we requested $100,000 over the past two years, you know, every year, $100,000. Not able to do it this time, so we're doing, we're making do with what we have, Gary Morello and his staff are making do with what we have. We've had several dangerous situations out. You know, at Verdugo, we had a limb that fell and missed some kids, and we really do need to maintain our trees, and this is going to be a challenge, to keep those trees healthy and maintain them. And we have the funding associated with Cedar Mini Park. I think Mr. McFaul was talking about some of the needs out in the future years. Cedar Mini Park has a need of about $60,000 for maintenance. Rockhaven, if we open that up, that'll have a need for maintenance, and Maryland Mini Park as well, once we design and complete that. The others were, the Chess Park, we continue, there could be challenge by the Chess Park. This is one that we didn't really receive any additional money to maintain, it was just make do with what you have. Utilities, of course, and we're looking for any way to reduce our utilities. Gary and his staff are putting in mulch in areas that we can put mulch and reduce the watering if we can. They are looking for projects in the medians to reduce watering there as well. So we're looking at every opportunity we can. And then I think funding for the future maintenance of San Fernando Road, I think there's a two-year maintenance period, and after that, it gets transferred over to us, so we'll take a look at how we deal with that. The Civic Auditorium has always been a challenge. I think we're doing well with it. It doesn't impact the General Fund, but it does impact our Enterprise Fund, almost to the tune of $400,000. So the more we can reduce the cost of that, the more, you know, it helps our Enterprise Fund. And the termination of the Prop A Funds that affect the sports complex, right now, we receive about $260,000 a year from Prop A to help defer the maintenance of that facility. And I think in '15, '16, we will start losing money. We won't be getting as much. We're going to lose $60,000 starting in '15, '16, and after that, the money gets dwindled down even further. So we're going to have to look at ways of utilizing the Recreation Enterprise Fund or increasing charges at that time to make up that difference as the Prop A Funds run Of course, the increased need for meal services, especially now with seniors, we're seeing an increase in demand for the Congregate Meals Programs, the Home Delivered Meals Programs, and the county funding levels pretty much stay the same. Same for the Care Management, a case management program for the seniors. I think several months ago, we came to you with some figures. We are going to see an increase in seniors, in the senior population over the next 10, 20 years, of more than 10,000 to 15,000 seniors. And most do live in the ARC area. So we're going to see an increase in the level of services for seniors. And some questions and comments? I hope that covered as much as we could cover in a short period of time.
Any questions or comments?
You gonna do it up here?
Jump on you from behind.
That was a, as they say, pregnant, a pregnant moment.
I was nervous, I was just wondering what he was doing.
I think we can't get through the next question.
A really quick question. Do you see any opportunities for the Civic Auditorium? Is there anything that can be done to increase its use and generate more revenue from it?
Mayor Quintero and Councilwoman Friedman, we are looking at every option. What we've done is we reduced the fees. We went back to the Commission this year, reduced the fees so that we can draw more business in, and I think that's had an impact. That has had a positive impact. You know, with the advent of the Internet, we're losing a lot of the trade shows, and so we're looking for other opportunities to bring in different types of programming at the Civic. The boxing program is one. Of course, that was initiated by the mayor, but we're looking at those type of things. Ross is here, I mean, we can certainly answer more of that question, but we've seen an increase in the rental rates right now, rental of the facility, because of the drop-in prices.
Thank you.
But it is a concern. I mean, we really, I think the other thing that really is needed, we've looked at a partnership, potential partnership with Glendale Arts, in terms of utilizing and helping us book the facility. So we are looking at that. We had a study done by an independent consultant, and we have that study, and we'll have to implement the findings of that study. It isn't, unfortunately, it isn't at the same level as the Embassy Suites, but I think with some investment in the facility, we may be able to spruce it up enough where we can attract people into it. Right now, it does need some work. It's a facility that does need some work, and we have, I think, $500,000 slated for floor replacement in several years, but the interior also needs some work to help it out.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, well, not a question, but a comment on page eight. You mentioned the Quarterly Social Service...
Yes.
...Consortium. Are you doing anything in terms of helping these nonprofits, sort of to seek funding, anything along those lines, how to go about applying for grants, et cetera?
Mayor Quintero, we don't have the staff resources to help them. Mark Sturtevant is helping a few nonprofits. Mark writes our Capital Projects Grants, but program grants are a lot different than Capital Project Grants, a lot more time-intensive. So we don't have the resources. I think they help, they do help themselves when they get together, but formally, there's no really help for grants. At one point, I think we had the eCivis, that they could have accessed eCivis, but I'm not sure we have that available anymore. But Mark still does get calls. Mark actually met with the folks from the football club here, and is also working with, I think, Path Achieved to find some money.
Okay. And the next question along those lines is increased, on page 14, increased demands for care management and referral services. Has parks and recreation, specifically the Nutritional Meals Program, have they ever applied for CDBG funding?
We apply every year for CDBG funding, for both the Care Management Program and the Meals Program. We get some money. Over the years, it's been reduced, but we do get some money.
Those are my only questions. Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a luncheon at noon, so I don't know, this next one, I don't know if we can get through in 15 minutes, so...
That was my question, Mr. Starber.
I'm told finance can do it in 10.
If there's no questions asked after.
This is, this is finance.
I'm leaving at noon, but this one was scheduled to.
Okay. Well, why don't we get as far as we can? Again, Bob Demigato, he can get through this one in about 10 minutes. I'm sorry, that's what Bob McFaul told me, Bob Elliott could do is get through in 10 minutes.
Speed Finance, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will be brief in going through finance. Our mission statement is there, basically, we provide the back office support for all the departments. Two of our large core services that we do provide is obviously the budget, the budget process, budget oversight, and we publish the CAFER, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Statement. These are the sections that we have purchasing. Obviously, we do all the POs and contracts, the budget, and I would be remiss without saying thank you to Michelle Flynn and her staff for killing themselves the last couple weeks to get this process underway, and to Lily Fang as well. We do payroll for our 2,000-plus employees twice a month. We have a piece of risk management with the insurance funds. Obviously, we pay all the bills, do a lot of billing, and still provide LiveScan, which is the fingerprinting service in our lobby. There's our belated structure. Just a couple of notes, some of our accomplishments. Obviously, this year, I started. We created the Budget Administrator Position, but some of the important things we did, annually, we get the GFOA certificate for financial reporting, which is a pretty difficult thing to do. City of Glendale's been doing it for many, many years. We implemented the cost allocation, you've heard a lot about that. We worked with IS to implement a new budget module to allow all the departments an in-depth database to prepare the budget with. It was very cumbersome in the past. We were working with the Treasures Department to automate cash receipting. We did a customer service survey last summer amongst the departments to see how we're doing as a business unit, and obviously, we worked on the UUT this year for passage. Some of the things that have happened in the past, going into '08, '09, there was a 5 percent reduction, amounted to $248,000 for finance. It eliminated one position, and we moved some costs out and eliminated some others. One of note was the summary budget book. That was about a $15,000 reduction. Additional cuts taken this year, we've eliminated more positions. We moved one position to the Insurance Fund. We closed the Passport operation at the old police station. The remnants of that is the LiveScan fingerprinting that we've moved over to our lobby. So all the hourly positions with that have been displaced to other positions or have terminated voluntarily. And we still have some frozen positions. Basically, this is our budget for all our funds. There is a slight increase in total of the M&amp;O, and has been discussed before. That is basically, some of the cost allocations pushed out to the Insurance Fund. Of note, graphics used to be combined in Finance or the former Administrative Services when it was a larger department. Part of that consolidation for '9, '10 is moving graphics under the PIO for a consolidated function, and has been pared down and downsized with some retirements that are expected. So the costs of graphics will be going down internally. This is our General Fund piece, as it is now with some of the reductions in salaries and M&amp;O. Additionally, for '9, '10, there's about another .3 to get to our second 5 percent. I'm putting a reorganization together that will eliminate a few positions and consolidate some other functions within Finance, and we'll achieve, be able to achieve these savings and more. This is our Internal Service Fund, or Risk Management with our insurance. Again, you'll see the M&amp;O has increased. We have eliminated a frozen position, which is indicated with the $73,000 reduction. Again, there's been a slight increase, but that affects some of the rates we charge back to the departments for insurance coverage. Part of that, too, is insurance is getting more expensive. Some of our future challenges, just as a department is looking at the structural efficiencies for all our funds, part of that effort obviously was discussed with the consolidation of the fleet system. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes working on that and getting all the accounting to work. We're trying our best to streamline the budget document. We've got a lot of changes that I think we're going to implement this year and throughout the next couple of years. We're taking baby steps with that. Again, we're going to take a look at all our Internal Service Funds coming up this summer, analyzing what we can do and how we can cut costs within the technology funds, and how we can do better with our insurance funds. And obviously, the fleet is a big part of the Internal Service Funds that we will be looking at to get all the policies and procedures established with that as we move forward. And that's pretty much it. I did want to note, this is our continuing budget calendar, and we will get this information out on a scroll or in some form or not. This afternoon, we have the GRA during their meeting, and then we start again tomorrow.
Five minutes. Five minutes.
As fast as I could do it.
Let that be a lesson for all the other departments.
Speed reading.
Sorry, that's a joke, that's a joke.
And if you have any questions.
Any questions or comments?
Just a clarification, if you would, Mr. Elliott. I assume on the first page, when you were talking about the payrolls and salaries of both our 2,000-plus employees, you didn't mean in your department.
Oh, no, 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 citywide, citywide, obviously.
Just for those looking in, just for those looking in, just in case.
Any other comments? Okay, next.
So we have this afternoon, during the, following the Redevelopment Agency meeting, taking up the Redevelopment Agency budget. That will conclude today. Thank you for your time.
Just for the public to know for tomorrow?
For tomorrow, at 9:30 to 2 o'clock. You see it on the screen, Library, Management Services, Human Resources, Public Works, and Legal. So we're expecting to accomplish a great deal tomorrow.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We are adjourned.